Everybody. Let's call this. Uh, July twenty fourth, twenty twenty four, and it's my word special meeting to order. Uh, Stephen, would you mind reading the acknowledgement? So I pull that up. I should have asked. Uh, we acknowledge the original inhabitants of this place, the Snohomish people and their successors, the Tleilu tribes, who since time immemorial have hunted, fished, gathered, and taken care of these lands. We respect their sovereignty, their right to self-determination, and we honor their sacred spiritual connection with the land and water. We will call Warren Galbouski. She is excused on a work-related issue. Judy Bloodstone.
Yeah.
Suzanne Martini also notified us that she also had a family related issues. She is excused. Uh, Nick Maxwell.
Yeah.
Stephen Lee.
Here.
Jeremy Mitchell, it's me. And then Lee Hamkins.
Here.
You have it for. Okay, especially. We don't actually have approval minutes, do we?
No.
Yes, we can strike that. Uh. We will do audience comments first, uh, and then we'll, it looks like we'll move right into uh, new business and this is, uh. Yeah. We're so unfinished business, but land use goals and housing policy goals relating to the subcommittee work, uh, the bank worked it. Uh, is there any objection to the agendas? Okay. Uh, with that, we'll move into audience comments for those in the audience here. Look like that has his head up. Anybody online?
Nope.
Just look right here. Great. Okay, so we'll move right into, uh, the unfinished business of the land use and housing elements goals. And I was thinking that we should set some ground rules, given that we have, uh, only fifty minutes. And I was thinking that, uh, we would, uh, each group, uh, subcommittee lead would, uh, lead with their summary, high-level summary of, uh, what they did. And spend approximately like, hopefully it takes ten minutes each, uh, just high-level summary. And then that will leave us ample time on the back end if anybody wants to make comment or add stuff. Does that sound like a plan? Yes.
Kind of yes, I'm not prepared to do that, but, uh, I'll try to wing it as we can.
I'll jump in and. We will.
Okay.
Okay. Uh. Do you want us to present, or?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, the subcommittee leads with, uh, with just.
Nate, would you like to start us off on the land use? Sure, I think summary.
Um. So we had different approaches. Lauren went through and made a bunch of comments on the PDF of changes she thought would be a good idea. They're all very sensitive changes and Jeremy and I thought they made sense. Um, uh, we also developed a list of really policy questions, um, that things we would like to see happen in the, um, in a rewrite, in a, in an update uh, to the current policies and goals. And, um, the document that we provided that's in your packet, um, it starts with a list of those, um, those changes that we would, we hope the planning board will want to ask for, for updating the, um, the land use goals and policies. Is that what you're looking for, Jeremy?
Yeah, maybe a little bit more, uh, it's, I think our overarching thing was how can we make it more like, more simple? So somebody that's familiar with how this plan can kind of see the policy goal and then see the definition of what it be, what that policy goal means. Um, and I think we had given like a example of a J's jurisdiction where we thought it was, uh, structured and it looked in red well. So I think that's the overarching theme there. And then a lot of the other stuff is, you know, making sure that we're not duplicating um, any policy goals, which I believe staff was already in line with that would cross much of off.
Yeah, so that what we haven't seen is our version.
Yeah.
That's the timing of such, yeah.
Yep. And so I think that would probably be resolved, uh, and then see, do we have an equity component to our comments?
So. Well, that was one of the things we wanted to talk about. Um, but the important thing Jeremy is reminding, the third aspect of what we went through was, um, in order to make the whole, the, uh, um, goals and policies more easy to read and understand, um, we recommend that the, uh, the goals and policies document be restructured and we provided a new outline, um, that we think would work well. And finally, um, if you're looking for models of what things, oh, and we all, we all agreed that a new structure would work well. Um, and if you're looking for a model for how it might look, that would be very understandable, uh, Jeremy shared with us the roles and policies for land use from um, a town on the east side.
W.
Uh, Stephen Urquhart.
Urquhart.
Yeah.
Urquhart, um, which was indeed very understandable and very easy to follow. And so, uh, using that as a model that we should end up looking kind of like that, we all agree would be a good idea. That said, do you want to do the introduction to housing and then get into discussion of land use, or do you want to do land use and then wrap up?
Yeah, maybe we do the.
Six thirty.
On housing from a high level and then we can dive in. Dive into it.
Okay.
So, um, you know, it's funny because in some ways our report is a little bit similar in that we also thought it needed to be restructured, recognizing that we knew staff was working on these policies and maybe doing the same thing. Um, we offered a, a structure to it. Um, I would also say that, um, there were, we, we talked about how we really, the policies needed to do a better job of identifying where the policy should be applying to across the city versus just narrow. And some of these seemed like there were policies that were in specific areas that really should be citywide and that the citywide needed some attention, even though we know that the growth need is around the affordable housing. Um, there was, um, and in the restructuring, we thought that a lot of the policies, some of the policies could be eliminated, or I'm sorry, the goals could be eliminated and become policies. Um, there were policies we thought should be deleted or we didn't support. There were some in here that we thought were actions instead of policies. Um, and there were some that we flagged here that we thought, wow, these are real zingers and really need to have more discussion. Um, they're, they're kind of, they, they almost felt like they were being tucked in or all these other things that may be less consequential, but were really consequential. And we tried to flag those in, um, our comments. So, um, I think that probably hits the highlights. We did go through every single policy and provided comment on it um, and tried to do that under the structure that we were recommending. So it got a little bit confusing, I think, potentially because that crosswalk isn't um, complete, but, um, that was the intent behind the work that we did.
So would you mind if I?
Absolutely, go for it.
Okay, so, um, to a little bit more onto what Judy just said is that we took the goals and sort of grouped it into diversity of housing, people policies, administrative framework, and those were the three kind of areas in which we focused it. From an overarching standpoint, though, I think it was the, a common opinion that the, um, document as written tended to focus a great deal on low income and affordable housing. I think we all understood that, but to the exclusion of every other type of home in Edmonds, which comprises about eighty percent of the population or something like that. In other words, the people that are going to sit to view this in a town hall, they look at this and go, this doesn't apply to us. Does that make sense? In other words, we talk about keeping the character of Edmonds and that is, that goes towards a stat, uh, keeping, I guess, characters probably not the right, not a good word, but, um, keeping the neighborhoods that are currently existing as they are, realizing that there is growth and that we need to address the growth and we need to address those areas where the growth will occur, which is low income and affordable housing. But there are no real statements in the document at all about existing neighborhoods.
The comment that you're talking about here says many of the goals are focused on increasing affordable housing, which we believe is necessary. However, the housing element should provide general guidance for housing throughout the city as well, since development will occur there, even if it's not targeted housing.
That's correct, exactly right. And so I just wanted to give you the insight behind that. It's written there, but that was kind of a feeling we had in general. And then also to condense down the number of goals, uh, when we got it, it was twelve. Uh, we kind of got it down to the four or five-ish. And then we had to move, as Judy was saying, we had to move some reparks and things in areas that they weren't before.
I think we generally had a similar vibe where can we condense these twenty-two rules down to something more manageable and uh, uh, make the others maybe just overarching visions or visions of that specific. Or as Judy said, or as actions or, or something else inside of it.
Yeah. And we also thought we should bring forward, um, the material from the two thousand and twenty comp plan update about single-family residence neighborhoods. Um, so it's in, in the outline that we provided um, to incorporate the applicable policies from the two thousand and twenty comp plan, um, which are quality construction of housing is important to retain localized heritage and aesthetics. So we also wanted that to come from, same, same issue, just on the land use side.
The policies that were in trade with comp plan, they're still there in a different format. Uh, when we have the red line copy, that might probably be clearer, but we haven't totally eliminated anything. We have either modified some of the goals, policies, or, um, some existing policies were combined and there was lack of fight. But they're still there.
So this particular one is not in this particular draft. Do you mean that this draft is a draft of new policies and goals?
We would add to, so I think, um, if you're referring to what, are you sure it's in the housing or land use elements of the existing comp plan?
It's in the, it's in the land use.
It current land use, okay. Uh.
And it's, um.
Yeah.
Lauren had the, the ID previously, but she didn't leave it in the, in the final version.
Yeah, it could be that it was kind of combined and maybe words meant to maybe the same intent, but we can take a look at how that changed.
We felt, we saw the same lot loss that Lee was talking about, which is a plan for the single-family residential.
So we will no longer have single-family residential neighborhoods.
A big change.
So I think we need to like, that's elephant in the room, is that every, every area is changing.
A plan for the three-family residential neighborhoods.
And I felt like, I hate bringing up City Government, but like they did pretty well in, they had the same thing, like, hey, look, there is no more single-family neighborhoods because of the legislation. But here's what we still want to retain with the legislation.
Yeah.
And they defined what that is.
Yeah.
Pretty clear as day. And so it's still allow the city to, uh, or establish, allow their comp plan to establish, but you know, set parameters around retaining.
Yeah.
Whatever the look and feel city is.
So we're going to have about three or fewer family residential neighborhood and zone going forward. Not every fam, not every zone becomes multifamily in that the current single-family neighborhoods now will around only three, uh, units per parcel.
So I think we're going to have to come up with new terminology that defines multifamily as X units and above. And then this new name, which, you know, could be density or just residential, you know, I don't know, but. That, yeah, we've created new. Okay. Use designations. Right. Uh, you just haven't seen that work yet. It wasn't the previous. So it's this, yes. Oh, yes. That was it. Yeah, we did see it. So, um, there is a low-density residential and moderate-density residential. Yeah. Um. And the moderate-density residential is the multifamily, right? It says updating the existing multifamily land use type. And then, I mean, low-density residential is house-built. What? We're, we're, so we're working with Via on that right now. So we're not prepared to really speak to it in detail because there's no map adjoining right now. So it's, we're trying to get the descriptors right, but at the same time, without having to apply them, it's too soon. That's how they get it. It's a framework. Gotcha. Okay, yeah. So, um, there's two things, other things that I want to say is a high level for the housing that we did. Other categories that we tried to flag here, uh, things, policies that we thought were out of the city's purview. Um, and, um, hello, there was another one, but you reached that one out of me.
So I think it was the purview and then also budget constraints or, um, how, where are the funds going to come from for this? To create?
Yes, we had some discussion about that, yes. Yeah, but we didn't necessarily flag it that way in here. And nor did we necessarily flag one of the thoughts that is behind, um, the, the goal H one, and that is that there's nothing here that really makes it glaringly obvious that the focus of development is around the centers and the hubs. And, and so it, the need to strengthen that is, is your, this, this is what we're doing here so that people understand that. And then if I didn't say it already, is the geographic locations would be very specific. So, and there'd probably be very few goals or policies under those geographic specific areas because most of it's going to be gent.
Yeah. Right.
Herculean task.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know how we're going to generate a recommendation because there's so much here. Well, so, you know, what we envision, which never you and I have discussed is that, uh, from these subcommittee recommendations, we will also attach the, you know, our, our latest comments of the, uh, reformatting and, and redundancy eliminating work, um, and, um, send those back to Via and then Via would send a clean copy, final draft, so to speak. We have a August sixth council study session. We would like that to make that a joint session with planning board. So we can talk about that for the extended agenda. That gives an opportunity for, uh, you to present the subcommittee recommendations. Um, and hopefully with the final draft that have, that has resolved many of them. And that can serve as a verbal recommendation and maybe the formal recommend, you know, I, you don't, because it's not like a project recommendation, it's literally just advancing the elements, right? Uh, it can be, I think it can probably be pretty informal in the way that looks. Wow, you know, so you could come to the Aprils or August six, excuse me, and then just present it as a, as these are the subcommittee recommendations. And we believe that these have been resolved in the drafts that, that they have received. That would be a good goal for us to. Yeah. Aspire to. One thought I had for us in terms of how we might be able to move on this uh, with relative speed since the study is next week or two weeks. It is for us, I'm sorry. Uh, we're like two weeks. Two weeks, yeah. I, I skipped a week because I'm gone next week, but, um, um, is if we all have reviewed each other's sufficiently to identify what we either think needs discussing or we disagree with and not worry about discussing the rest, just accept anything that we don't bring out in the meeting. And, and then modify if we need to. Um, and hopefully that would narrow down what we need to talk about before we come to agreement on a recommendation.
I think it's really contingent upon getting a clean copy back that incorporates what we've done to date and then seeing where they're at.
Although, given the timeline, does this not need to formulate a recommendation regardless of what they come back with? Am I right about that? No, I'm wrong. Okay, well, I don't, I wouldn't say wrong, but the way I was thinking is that, um, ultimately you'll be presenting the subcommittee, subcommittee's recommendations, period. Just what this is. But we don't have time, I mean. But you're, but I guess what I'm saying is, is that there will be time, uh, and I don't know exactly, we're going to get this to Via tomorrow. And then they said they would turn it around by. Monday. By Monday. This is so, uh, so very quick turnarounds. Um, so in, in a perfect world, these, this would be ready for the packets. And. Right, right. It has to be. And so then therefore, you know, the goal would be the subcommittee reviews the, the packet and, and because I think that, you know, there has to be a level to be like a full honesty and transparency that what is most important first, content, right? Let's get the content. Right, the doozies that you mentioned, that, that, you know, the clean, the can, the, the continuing cleanup, the formatting, we can continue to do that. All right, so let's, um, I, I would love for, because we have, this plan's not due to the end of the year, we still need to consolidate it, we're going to be taking it from a Word document to a InDesign document, it's going to look better, it's going to feel better. Uh, it'll be cleaner because it will lead less redundancies. So, so in, in my ask of the planning board is really to think about content first. Yeah. Uh, and especially for that, that August sixth is recognizing that that's a quick turnaround. So.
Is that August sixth going to include the rest of the elements with the land use and housing?
So, so let me make sure I'm clear in my mind. What you want a recommendation on is not what we just reviewed, but what you're going to produce next. No, 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 no. I'm not asking you more work. All I'm saying is take the recommendations on August sixth, you can verbalize those to council. Hey, we reviewed, uh, this, a previous draft. We gave guidance to staff on X, Y, and Z, and then staff turned, take, had taken those into considerations. And here's that new draft. You may still have issue in that new draft and you may just highlight, hey, we're still looking at X, Y, and Z. Do you know, and so just flagging it for council, then there'll be council discussion. That's a ninety-minute meeting. And so there'll be, you'll be able to say, we're still a little unsettled on this. Let's have a conversation.
Yeah, my hunch is we can use the summary, uh, memo, if you will, as the basis for that. Uh.
Leave ahead. Read ahead for them?
Right, exactly.
We'd have to add our element to that.
Yeah.
Your document certainly of higher quality. So I think we could do that. So can I ask, but from a standpoint of, of, um, rules? Uh, are you allowed to share with us the packet before the packet goes out for, um?
Yeah.
In other words, if you get it back from Via on Monday, it would be terrible to waste the whole week.
No, we wouldn't.
Waiting it, waiting for it. In other words, till the following Friday to get it when we had four or five days to, to really.
Yeah, we can send those.
Would appreciate that.
Yes.
Correct. Also, between the two elements that we just reviewed in subcommittees, do we all think there's enough deliberateness between the two that really resonates with Edmonds? Or do you think we need to bolster that component of it within the policy?
I have no feeling what you're saying.
Being that i- if we review the housing, if we read the housing, like this, you know, high-level, does it fit within Edmonds? Land use to overall, does it fit within Edmonds? And if it doesn't, like, what more can we be deliberate about to tailor it to?
I don't think we need to have all the recommendations be specific to Edmonds. There are some things that might be just generally a good idea for any city.
Yeah, and, and that's why I guess I'm saying I don't think every policy needs to be like, oh my gosh, this has to be, look and feel like this. I think just overall, you know.
Remember that this is the housing element is, eh, mm, to some degree is focused on the issues according to our needs and opportunities and state law. So like, it really, there is a reason why it's focused on, 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 not only affordability, because I think you're right. I think there is a lot in there about affordability, but it's about diversity of housing typologies. Uh, and there is talk about missing middle in there and DAD is, there is a reason why there, that is hyper-focused is because, right, that's, this is a twenty-year growth strategy which looks at needs and opportunities. There are other elements of this document that you're not seeing right now, right? So there, there's, um, you know, there's the community design chapter, which, which used to be the, um, community culture and, um, urban design. So there's going to be some other aspects, you know, or other areas that we can.
Okay, I just think if we're not deliberate enough, especially in these two elements that uh, there's going to be a lot of people that are unhappy with the result.
So I guess I, I'm sorry. I was going to say that in my mind, I don't know what that would mean. If the policies point towards creating an Edmonds that we want, that to me is Edmonds.
Is it?
That's enough. It doesn't need to say we're special and unique. We need to make sure that the policies reflect what we want. So I, I think I'd rather spend the next half hour talking about the areas that we disagree on in here and in each of our reports so that we have something by the end of this meeting that we can say to the council, we as a, as a board, this is what we're sending to you.
I think I'm, what I'm sort of hearing from Jeremy's kind of question is not so much like what it's a hard question. Um, I, I, I think it's sort of like, how, how does it read? Maybe is, or what is the tone almost? Yeah. Um, and I don't know that it's necessarily saying we're going to change everything, but I think maybe what you're trying to get at is how do we make what's here better? Um, and also more diverse and equitable and, and all of the, you know, capitalize on the opportunities to just make a better city, make a good city great, right? Yeah. Um, and I think there are elements of that, but I, I feel like it is hard to encapsulate that in just these two elements because that really needs to tie into the entire comp plan because there's the pacemaking, there's the community um, aspects, there's the economic development, all these things. And, um, I, I, I find that hard just reading individual elements because you get really myopic in that section, but want to know the rest. Um, but I, I, I agree, it's a good question, um, that I think people are going to ask. Well, and I think how it's accomplished in jurisdictions that we were all looking at as part of the subcommittee was in that overarching vision of each element. That's where you stated. And then, yeah, the, the goals below can be, you know, pointing towards that.
I, I, I don't think that the visions themselves provide enough of a broad brush. What, what is the real long-term twenty-year? What do we want this to look like in twenty years? Recognizing that growth is going to come primarily from these areas and that we also have to balance our existing neighborhoods with those other forms of growth and not change the overall complexion of the Edmonds that everybody loves. And my last comment is this, I think that we're going to have to defend this in front of, there's a lot of folks who are going to sit in a town hall meeting.
Sure.
And those folks are typically not the ones who are going to be part of the low-income or the the affordable, uh, housing discussion. And they're going to say, uh-uh, I don't want you changing a thing on my street. So it's, it's going to be, if it's not written in a little bit more balanced format, it's going to set off a lot of alarms and I think we're going to have some real trouble.
I think so the land use overarching vision. So again, the, these, we were also changing these, the term overarching vision to overarching, uh, principle, right? So it's basically. Guiding, guiding, guiding. Yeah, so that didn't make sense. So because we have an overall plan vision, right? And so the intent of these guiding principles is to connect back to that, to that broader vision. Now, it does say grow mindfully, right? Grow mindfully, the place driven approach. That's, that's honoring the place, right, in which it exists, right? Or which growth will occur. So grow mindfully with a place-driven approach that integrates all aspects of the built environment. So land use, transportation, economic development, infrastructure, social amenity to foster well-designed and livable environments for all. So I'm not. To foster well-designed and livable environments for all. So I'm not opposed to changing that by any stretch, but I think when we talk about. You know, does it honor place? Does it, uh, does it talk about growing mindfully yet? I mean, growing, change contents. I, but again, I'm open to it, I just think that one. Now, housing, you know, it's different, right? Housing, the, the guiding principle would be Edmonds is an inclusive community. Or, and I love the comment. Uh, that the subcommittee made to say, it shouldn't say every resident, right? It should say current and future residents, right? Uh, that was a great, good catch, we wanna be in, we wanna be a welcoming city, that's part of our overarching vision, right? So we'll make that change, uh, regardless of income background, ability, has access to safe, affordable, and dignified housing. So that guiding principle doesn't talk about necessarily context-based. Character, you know, that kind of thing, that's more so in the land.
Okay, so I do wanna do. Judy, it's suggested, just kind of look through these, if we drew it, even if we don't, like.
Yeah, could we, could we all, I will keep going through, so we have a bunch of things that we. Thought should happen, and one thing that we didn't, we're, we're not. We didn't have unanimity on, um, that I would love to run through the rest of the, of the board. Um, and I'm happy to make sure I wrap up going through those by quarter. Would that be okay right now?
Uh. Are we able to get through all the rest of them from a, a whole standpoint?
It seems.
I, I think that's everything we need from the land use.
Okay, yeah.
Judy, what were you just gonna say?
Are you starting like with your first page where it's pick one box?
Yeah.
Oh, good.
But the other ones are not pick one box, they're even easier.
Okay.
That's the hard.
That's great, that's the hard.
So the hard one is, um, it's found, it, it's, it's founded on the, the term equity. Um, and in this case, equity means Edmonds works as well for every Edmonds residence as it does for every other Edmonds resident. Um, and that, that can be confusing to people, um, but that, that's the idea is that, uh, it works as well for everyone. Um, and then the choices here are, we can say, uh, the, the, the challenge here is that land use one point one and land use two point three conflict with one another. One one, one point one says, add infrastructure and resources where they're strong, land use two point three says, add infrastructure and resources where they're weak. Um, so we. This may have come out of thinking about hubs and centers, uh, so one possibility, which is what I am suggesting. Um, uh, but we did not have unanimity on is that goals and policies should promote equity by promoting development in underserved neighborhoods where infrastructure and public resources. Like parks, trails, libraries, community centers, sidewalks, stormwater systems are currently weaker than they are in other places. And this includes not adding more infrastructure and public assets where they're already plentiful. For example, not adding more public facilities and resources to downtown or the creative district, so that's. One possibility. The other possibility is that goals and policies allow development decisions to sometimes prioritize capitalizing on locations with stronger infrastructure. And other ti- times prioritizing equity. And so, that, myself, uh, I prefer, let's, let's go down equity.
I was so, yeah, can I say, when I read this, I thought, um. That, I'm with you, that we need, but, but. Um. Promoting development of growth doesn't necessarily. Um, go hand in hand with. Um. Underserved neighborhoods if we want that growth. To be directed to the hubs and centers, because those underserved neighborhoods are not necessarily in those hubs and centers. So I've almost was of a mind that we need to have the policy. Say, we're directing growth to hubs and centers, and. We're going to provide, make sure that these underserved communities are getting the public resources and infrastructure to make them. On a similar footing as the rest of the city, and so that those are disconnected. Because I'm not convinced that if we are sincere about trying to direct. The growth to the hubs and centers, that it's gonna get to those underserved communities.
So I, I, I think. Just a clarifying, and, and this is, right, this is language, if it's in here, we need to change, right? We, I would say promote development, right? So, y- you know, whilst our land use framework will, quote unquote, enable development. Right? We don't promote development, so, so I don't even think we have to compete, uh, so I think we need to change the language to not feeling like we're competing. Uh, we can enable growth in areas where it's appropriate, in areas where it has existing infrastructure. But I like the way you differentiated that Judy in this, like, that, that is true, we wanna enable development in areas where it makes sense, where there is infrastructure that exists. You know what that does? That saves the city and developers money from building new infrastructure, and you know what that does? That enables. Capital projects to be done in areas that are under-invested and underserved and not getting development. Right? And so therefore, I think there, yeah, there are two opposing policies.
Two different policies, and, you know, and I also, you know, as I was, uh, looking at this whole idea of developing growth to areas with existing infrastructure, including streets. Active transportation networks, transit, water supply, and utilities. Um, it's sort of like, so where in the city are not those? I know about parks, and I know about sidewalks. But where don't we have adequate sewer? Where don't we have adequate water? Where don't we have? Um. That, so do we want different places with transit? That's sort of like, I, I'm a little bit unclear.
So, uh, inadequate, uh, stormwater, we know up in Perrinville and, uh, going into Lake Ballinger. Is what we know about already.
Okay.
But the point is, it's a policy, this is not specific applications of what to do. The policy is to provide, uh, equity in stormwater, equity in, and. The, the equity in water that you're imagining ha- is, exists, which I hope does exist. Um, but the point is, our policy is that there would be equity in, um. In water services, equity in, uh, cable.
Doesn't the equity come as a result of development? In other words, if somebody wants to develop an area, there has to be a plan for the development, and there has to be a. Study done about current water existing services and how much more of an upgrade, and that's a.
It may, but not necessarily.
I'm sorry?
It may, but not necessarily.
Well, it does, I, I mean, we, we have to, we have to prove adequate infrastructure for new development, uh, per project, right? So.
Then you're relying on development, so let's take sidewalks and parks, for example, those don't occur necessarily. Throughout a neighborhood that's underserved.
True.
It happens at the frontage and, and whatever else we make.
Yeah, and the park doesn't even occur. With the, with the development.
And some of the policies are that we should be adding street amenities to downtown, street amenities to creative district. Art to the creative district, and other. Things like that to neighborhoods that are already overflowing. With those kinds of things. Um, meanwhile, it does not say that we need to add all that stuff to enhance. The sidewalk experience in the international district or the health district. Uh, and, uh, an equity perspective is, if you're gonna add art, um, or you're gonna add. Binches to sidewalks and add sidewalks, you wanna add them where we don't have them, not where things are.
I think we're in incredible agreement here. I just, I just don't think, I don't know whether, anyway. I think we're in agreement.
Yeah.
I agree a hundred percent that that's where the assets should be used. Um.
So, so I have a sort of a promise to, to Jeremy, we're gonna go through these quickly. So I, I'm gonna make a motion that we are, um, requesting this, this thing in the top box about equity. Um, so my, my motion is that we make. A request that, that this become the, the policy as much as possible, understanding. That we're not talking about the. Growth in hubs and centers, growth in hubs and centers is a separate issue. Than public resources like parks, trails, libraries, community centers.
I, I'm not really understanding how to apply this, so, so I, I wanna, I understand the top, the issue that you're, that you're highlighting, I'm just not understanding. So, what do you want, how are you recommending?
To start with, we would get rid of the policies one point one, three point one, three point two, five point one.
Oh, okay.
But also you wanna go through any policies that are favoring. Uh, uh, current area. That is doing well with something, so more art, more. Sidewalk amenities for downtown would not be. The goal or the policy. Of the, uh.
Yeah.
Complain.
Yep, and I understand the struggle, and I think the, you know. Inequities of downtown versus other places is, is valid. Uh, I think when we look at our. The creative district as our regional destination under economic development. You know, the, the waterfront in downtown still will resonate with investment, and whether that's through specification of grant funding. Or through development partnerships, we could be more clear, uh, as to, you know, capital should be prioritized. City capital should be cap, should be prioritized in underrepresented, underserved neighborhoods. Leveraging grants, leveraging, you know, uh, developer contributions in downtown and the waterfront. You know, should be the way in which we get investment in this, but to not, to kind of. You know, stipend it off altogether may not be good, just either.
If staff time is, is, are we gonna be working on grants for?
Yes.
For the international district, or are we gonna be doing grants for the creative district? Staff time would be prioritizing the international.
Yeah, okay, we can look at.
So I've actually made a motion, do I have a second?
Right, or check for it all?
Well, actually, discussion after the second.
Okay.
Promise.
Okay, I'll make a second.
Discussion.
Discussion.
I'm, I'm not sold on, well, I'm still also a little unclear about the implementation. Um, I'm also not sold about making this a conversation around equity either, because I, I feel we're, we're talking very much around a. Zero sum kind of game here, where if, if, you know. As people in the underserved neighborhoods get something, then we have to take it away from downtown, I just, I feel like. That's a losing battle, because we, we do need downtown and the creative district and the waterfront and ninety-nine and, and Westkin, all, we need all the neighborhoods to do well. In order for all of that to trickle down to the rest of the neighborhoods, um, so I don't know that I. I don't know that I, I wanna make that conversation specifically about equity, that like, well, just because downtown has it, then we need to have it too. Because I, I think it needs to be a thoughtful development pattern of like, where, where does it make sense for us to. Invest our energy and resources so that the entire city can gain. Um, because I, I feel like it's gonna be very uneven, um, and, and if we're as, if we're talking aspirationally, right? It's like, we want all the neighborhoods to do well, we don't want just the underserved neighbors to do well and better, want downtown to thrive as well. Um, so I, I don't, I guess I don't know what my comment or concern necessarily is, but it is that. I'm not sure that talking around it as an equity component of like, you know, win versus lose is maybe the right approach. Um. I, I wonder if there's a way to. Put the language so that it is that we're, we're investing in all the neighborhoods, um, in a thoughtful way that, you know, it. Eh, as a citywide and as a bigger picture, um, really benefits the entire city, uh, but I don't know eh, how, how we wanna sort of work that.
And I, I think from a, just a TMA too, we do have two activity centers, right? Those activity centers. Actually have a relevance, uh, under our, uh. The GMA framework and, and through Snohomish County tomorrow, like, we're, our activity centers are, you know, eh, a. Handful of them regionally, right? And, sorry, let me do.
I, I, I'm happy to let you finish, I just don't know what activity centers are.
Activity centers were identified in the last comprehensive plan as an area in which we, um, identify as growth and as, um. Serving regional destination, they also have both, both the subarea ninety-nine and the waterfront both have our, uh. Uh, high capacity transit opportunities in the city. So when you're talking about kind of investment, that's where our, our regional transportation investment goes, is Highway ninety-nine and the waterfront through the ferry. And through the sounder, um, and so, again, I would just say, investment is really critically important. Uh, in our activity centers, I, so, yeah, it's a tricky matrix of like, I, I agree, let's lift it up, but also. There is historic underinvestment. Happening that we need to daylight, uh, and resolve in this as well, so not that I'm. Solving a problem right now.
I do.
Rephrasing it.
Through comment that, um, shouldn't just exclude. Any neighborhood just because they already have structure in place. You know, I think we, you know, all. Hey, uh, so however we can.
This does not exclude any neighborhood, it just speaks to the timing. So, once there is a library that you can walk to in the international district and the health district. Um, then the fact that there's a library that you can walk to in the bowl. Um, is balanced, and you're serving people in terms of libraries with equity. And so additional development could be down in the bowl for more. Resources of, of that sort. Um, but to start, what you say, as you think about a new library, is you say, gosh, we have a library in the bowl. And the museum, and. Uh. The, that we don't have, uh, a library, uh, in the international district or, or in the health district.
So land use two point three, policy two point three, says equitably distribute the benefits of growth by investing infrastructure in underserved neighborhoods, such as those with inadequate transportation, green space, utility services. And deficient community facilities.
Correct, what this motion is saying is that two point three ought to be what guides us.
Okay.
And the policies that are in conflict with two point three and inconsistent with it should be removed.
And those are the ones you listed.
Those, the, the ones that are listed are, are more examples, I don't know that every policy is consistent, those ones are clearly inconsistent. Only. So basically, this is, uh, two point three is an important policy that we think should be pervasively influential.
Let's talk about three point one, because I, I think it, I think this is like what, from a, just a urban design structural perspective. You know, we, Edmonds does have a unique downtown in its historic. The, the narrowness of our storefronts, the, the, the kind of the human scale, uh. The, the street frontage, the facades, the materiality. It's, it's really, it is unique and it is historic, um, you know, some of the recommendations by the historic preservation committee is to really look at that as a his, uh, our downtown as a historic district. Calling it what it is, right, and it, because it has those unique attributes, so I think when we talk about identity, that, that is important too. We can't delete that for, I don't think that's relevant to, I mean, my opinion, staff opinion, and, and in terms of historic preservation, this, it is unique. Uh, and we.
And, this is where.
No, no, I'm done.
We're done, I'm done. Sorry about that.
No, no, you're.
I agree with you on this one, and, and I think this is where. Really clear about what applies sort of holistically rather than geographically. Oriented, because if you were to just have this as a general policy rather than downtown. It wouldn't have that same feel to it, and so to me, just looking at some of these that are more holistic, that. Holistically defined, because, you know, regardless of where they're located, this is a good policy. And, um, I would, I would structure it a little bit differently, but that's besides the point, it's, that's not substantive. Um, so. I do think one point one kind of gets at it, because those are specifically potentially in conflict. Um, with, so to me, one point one. And two point three are the ones that seem. Um, most in conflict, I think, is, and I thought. I'll give you one point two. Um, and then. Two. So again, you know, three point two is on the list too, and if that was just generally speaking for all neighborhoods.
Right, both of those.
That would be.
Both of those are only a problem because they're specifically in the downtown sector.
Right, I think that's right.
Move them up, so they apply and, and apply them with an equity lens, and they're great.
Yeah.
Amongst other things, the, the whole history of ninety-nine is something that we've lost quite a bit of, it, it. Was incredibly important for the development of rock and roll in the nineteen fifties and nineteen sixties, in Edmonds.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, so there.
But it's gone, and the most recent roadhouse, the, most recently, the last roadhouse was destroyed, uh. Although that's in, in, uh. Esperance.
We have.
So.
Seven minutes.
That's okay.
Yeah.
Can I call a vote?
Well, can I make a friendly amendment?
Sure.
Okay, I would make a friendly amendment that we um. Strike in the recommendation includes dropping these policies. Um.
How about uh, this includes revising?
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Policies.
I think that'd be fine. And then I also.
Three point one.
Yeah.
Except in three point one, yeah.
Okay.
And, but I think once you, you organize these policies, I think that will just make all the difference in the world, honestly.
Sounds good.
Yeah, and then um the other, can I make two friends?
Sure.
And the goals and policies promote equity by promoting development. And I would say goals and policies promote equity by investing in underserved development. Partly because of the statement that Susan made that we do not promote development in certain locations. But also because people are really trying to say you need to make the investments there.
Yeah.
And um. Development. May or may not be the vehicle for getting there.
Sounds great. I love it.
I've, well, I'll second that. And, and I, I think I do agree and I will, we have six minutes, but um. We, I agree that um. Around the s- equity aspect, I, but I very much agree that like, we don't wanna like leave anybody else out really. It's like, we just wanna do that and that. Um, with the equity lens and making sure that we are being mindful of where it's being invested, so.
Do you think reorganizing the document will help a lot?
Should I call a vote?
Yes.
Yeah, so.
What is the?
Second with.
We'd have to do the, I think we have to do the friendly amendment first and then we do the. All.
So.
Motion.
Do we?
Did we have to vote on friendly amendment?
Yeah.
Well, do we have to take a? Vote on this at all? This is just the conversation to be incorporated.
I'm not explaining this, but it, it is um an option to clarify conversation and consent.
I don't believe we had time to discuss this in your consensus. So I believe we do need.
Yeah, I, I agree. Uh, but we're not doing that at the end anyway, so. Yeah, so. All in favor of as I mentioned. Say hi.
Hi.
Hi. Those. In line. Okay.
So the rest are, sorry to go quickly, but the rest are um maybe we'll go more quickly. Um. Uh. We make a motion that the goal for zoning for sexually oriented businesses be removed. And um some background on that, that is not required by state law or. Um. Anything. It is recommended, but not required. And I think it's, I don't think it's uh appropriate for us in that.
Yeah, it's not required to have it in there. I don't see a reason to put it there.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Great. Move second.
Any discussion before we vote?
Favorite say hi.
Hi.
Hi. Here is, okay, uh, pedestrian scale, public transportation.
So um. The current goals have human scaled. Uh. Buildings as a goal of the downtown. And we have heard a lot from Edmund citizens for desire for what you might call human scaled, pedestrian scaled. Structures throughout Edmunds.
Yeah.
And so uh this is a proposal that human and pedestrian scaled and public transportation oriented structures. And infrastructure be a goal for all of Edmunds. Human scale structures and infrastructure include walkability, human scale building, high ground or pedestrian engagement. Mixed use and live work housing choices and minimizing traffic noise, water pollution, air pollution and nighttime light pollution. And I'm going very fast here. I am happy to table these things if this requires more discussion. But does this make sense, number three, for all of it?
Yeah. Oh, you do saw there, okay.
So again, this is a motion that we make this.
Second emotion.
Oh, I, sorry, uh, more information about live work. We had a lot of in-depth conversations about this. It really uh can be problematic in certain areas where. We want to continue to promote a ground level commercial or retail um option. This is uh example is downtown. We had a robust discussion with councils, you remember with emergency ordinance. Uh, when we had a fully uh residential building proposed, so ground floor residential. Uh, they believed that was too close to the downtown core and changed the zoning. There is relevance to say, right? Cause the live work typology does appear to be residential on the ground floor, but. Uh, it tends to also be a business. So he can, it, uh, it is a very much a residential looking typology that may not be appropriate in the core. Of our centers.
So maybe we should be adding the term flexible before mixed use. Because what I'm imagining is that people have choices.
I would just leave it at mixed use. And because mixed use can be that too. It's a generalized term. Live work is not a generalized term.
Oh, was it just that particular phrase you?
Yes, yes, that's the only.
And also within mixed use, we might have subcategories as um that table right now says only low density and moderate density mixed use. But then as we work on the future land use designations, there might be categories within that. So that can probably define. Where we can and where we can't.
So, so just eliminate, live work is what we're saying. Yeah.
Would I?
Or just say housing choices, right?
This is not about housing choices to me, given that it's in downtown. And what this speaks to me though is that it relates to all the centers and hubs that we've been talking about. That they should have the same standard as what is in downtown. So. That's why the suggestion about when you vamp. That if you've got your neighborhood hubs and centers. And you've got downtown as one of them, this may not be a downtown. It's gonna be in the neighborhoods and hubs that. This is human scaled for all of these neighborhood hubs and centers, not specific to downtown.
So how about an amendment? Of cutting ground floor pedestrian engagement and cutting mixed use and live work housing choices. So it's a. Human scale structures and infrastructure, including walkability, human scale housing heights and minimizing traffic noise, water pollution, air pollution, that type. Light pollution.
Yeah, you really just want any development to be human scale.
Yeah.
The first, the first thirty feet.
Maybe we don't have enough time because of seven oh one.
So at some, I mean, we didn't get to.
We can table that.
Yeah, I, it, like I said, this is so me, I just.
Let, let me jump, jump down to five.
We have to adjourn it just because there's probably other people. Might be passionate.
Right, I'm sorry. I lost track of the time. Um, I'm sorry to take time and not leave enough time for the housing folks.
There was a lot there.
It's a lot.
You're good.
Uh, so at some point. I don't know how the.
We have these comments.
Yeah.
Let us, let us uh interpret them. We can uh.
And I, what you won't be able to do is say this came from the plan.
So what does that mean? What do you mean I won't be able?
It came from the subcommittee because we didn't, that is all lesser word.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
Uh, well, let's think about that.
That's true in the housing too, you know, and there is a lot of things in there, but so.
Can we quantify that on August sixth date?
Why don't, uh, here's a suggestion. Uh, we may get through the agenda pretty quickly tonight. You could amend, could you amend the? Agenda tonight to add this?
If we have time, I need to get home before dark.
No, I mean, I would like that as well. I think you're, that's a unanimous. Desire probably, but um, otherwise. We're not, I, I don't know what else the solution is.
Well, one solution maybe is to indicate to council that we were not able to, uh, we didn't. We just didn't have the time to be able to work in town such as.
Yeah, that's, that's, but that's becomes an ineffective joint session, right? Because then you're gonna be debating amongst yourselves and we don't want to do that as council.
So once we have the revised document before putting it in the packet. Probably that's when you'll have another chance of having a look at.
They can't talk about it as a.
Well, they can have a look at that and on August sixth before the joint session starts.
They can't talk amongst themselves.
We'd have to call a special meeting.
Have to do a special meeting.
To do that.
Yeah, so. Let's just see how the seven o'clock goes and maybe we.
We can, we have time.
amend the agenda and then otherwise we can talk about it at the tail end with the extended agenda, see what we need to do.
One thing I do recommend is that for the next com- uh comprehensive plan. Um, that be double amount of time allotted for. To give us a fair shot.
We're, we're here all day. So I mean, whenever we're free, we, we're happy to meet for any extended period of time.
Have to officially adjourn on the last Friday.
Yes.
Then stop the recording and stop again, but.
Yes.
Okay, isn't it the same?
It's the same link.
Okay.
Just stop recording.
All right, so we're gonna adjourn the special meeting at seven oh three.